Would you be so kind as to stand for an invocation and then remain standing for the flag of the United States? Dear Lord, we come to you this morning asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens of Henry County. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure at nine o'clock with the regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013, come to order. I would like to entertain a motion from one of our group members to accept the agenda as published.
So moved.
Have a motion from District 3, second from District 1. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next on the agenda, we'd like to recognize our Animal Care and Control Department Director, Jerry, for presentation of a donation from the Pedigree Foundation and the Kroger to Animal Control. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. The Pedigree Foundation is a philanthropic 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to helping dogs in need find loving homes. Believing that every adoptable dog deserves a home, the Pedigree Foundation's mission is to help those dogs by providing grants and donations to shelters and rescue organizations to encourage dog adoptions. For the second year, the Pedigree Foundation has partnered with Kroger Stores for a unique awareness and fundraising opportunity. The purchase of any Pedigree brand product from Kroger Stores supported this effort. We were very fortunate to receive the donation last year, and in November, Mr. Jim Puceteri, who is manager of the Kroger Store 493 on Hudson Bridge Road in Stockbridge, presented a 2013 Pedigree Foundation donation check to our department, and this year the amount is for $5,000. So I'm here this morning along with Mr. Jim Puceteri to formally present this donation and the check from the Pedigree Foundation and Kroger.
Anybody else have any comments? For record, we approved the grant at our last regular meeting.
Yes, on the 19th.
This is if, and I apologize for that because I am responsible for the agenda, and I failed to catch that, so I apologize to inconvenience Kroger and Pedigree. But anyway, you have to look at me for that. So now we'll all get together and have a photo. Mr. Shane Rutledge requests approval before the board regarding the Sprouts Project. Okay, the chair determines that she's not here, so we're gonna move on. Public Safety, Resolution Requesting Acceptance of Grant from the Georgia Trauma Care Network Commission. Mr. Chief Brad Johnson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This morning I have several resolutions for you, but the first one is accepting the Georgia Trauma Network Commission's grant for trauma equipment. Henry County was awarded this grant for an amount of $19,103.84. This is a non-matching grant fund, and the funds will be used once the check arrives for trauma equipment. Just need you to approve the chair to make all necessary documentation for this grant to go through and receive the check.
We have a resolution in the book requesting authorization to accept the trauma equipment grant in the amount of $19,103.84. Does somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District 3, second from District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved.
Thank you. The next one, number B, or letter B from Public Safety, is a resolution for mutual and automatic aid to Rockdale County. We've always had mutual aid and automatic aid to Rockdale County. This is just to reaffirm that. They have a new commission, new fire chief, and this documents were sent to us by Rockdale to get you guys to approve. It's our recommendation we continue that agreement, which was originally approved in 2008, and by allowing the chair to sign the documentation, to continue that agreement with them.
Okay, we have a resolution in the book authorizing Henry County to enter into an automatic slant mutual aid agreement in Rockdale County. Does somebody consider? We have a motion from District 4 to approve said resolution. Have a second from District 1. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Brad, and this may be for our county attorney. I've gotten several calls over in the Kellytown area, pretty close to the Rockdale County land.
Mm-hmm.
We're outside of the five-mile zone, you know, for our rating.
Yes, sir.
Now, in doing a, an agreement, a mutual aid agreement with Rockdale, does that play any way into that person now being within five miles because we have a mutual aid agreement? Is there, is there anything, and the next part of that question, is there anything we could do to make that kind of thing happen?
You know, we're working with that general subdivision right there just north of Kellytown and Airline. It's a great concern of us. Their rates have definitely tripled or quadrupled over, over the last few months when ISO changed their, their mileage to, they didn't change their mileage to five miles. It's always been five miles. They computer generate their tracking now, so we are working with them. This is a first step into that. There's a training component, and we have to have documented responses through our dispatch center to them. So just by signing the paperwork, ISO won't just go back and change it, but we have to now show a trend where we have calls there, we have a seamless transition of automatic, where automatic means our dispatch center automatically sends to our units and automatically sends Rockdale County at the same time. And that's why now we have to have some documentation trends on that for them to reevaluate and help with that.
That'd be good. So this is basically the first step in moving forward with that so that our citizens will get, and we also will be, by the mutual aid, we may be able to help Rockdale in the same sense.
Exactly right. And that whole side corridor there, the 155, 138 area for Rockdale, you know, go up 155, one side's on Rockdale, one side's on Henry. We run really good together right there. The seamless thing is getting all the documentation and process in place for our training, our historical response data, and getting that in place. And, you know, eventually having that other station is gonna be the ultimate protection and coverage of our citizens, but this is our first step to get this ratified for our citizens to help their interest rates.
And just for those out, I think that they started using GPS as opposed to...
They did.
You know, as the crow flies, and that, that put a lot of our citizens on, in both areas, and we may can actually look at the other county lands similar to have some agreements in place where we may can help our citizens throughout the county.
Every county that touches Henry County has to have automatic mutual aid with them. You know, some places it helps, some don't, like Newton County. 81 highways, only one because of the South River. There's no crossings, so it's really hard, but just having that, that relationship with our communities, our fellow public safety workers in other counties, when some things, the big disasters happen, it's good to have that relationship in place on the front end instead of the rear end.
Thank you.
So there are some agreements in place with the Cab and the...
The Cab, Clayton, we're working now with them trying to get theirs back. They dropped theirs when they had some issues with the cities years ago, but every other county around us, we do have, have the automatic mutual aid. It's just reaffirming that everything's in place.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved.
Thank you. And the last one, D for Public Safety, is a purchase, I'm sorry, no, C, C, skip, C, C. Is resolution for the purchase of firefighting boots. These are our leather firefighting boots. This is our normal maintenance for wear and tear, 40 pair, the Hyax Extreme Buckle Boots. Went through the bidding process, repurchasing. Fireline was the most compatible and lowest priced at $10,920. Our recommendation is for award a bid to Fireline for that amount. This is a budgeted amount under personal protective equipment.
Somebody, we have a resolution in the book authorizing the purchase of firefighting boots for the Henry County Fire Department. Somebody would consider moving in that direction?
So moved.
We have a motion from District 5, second from District 2. Any further discussion? Any discussion, any comments or questions at this time?
I'd just like to ask Brad a question.
Yes, sir.
Brad, and I notice here we're gonna be also approving some self-contained breathing apparatuses.
Yes, sir.
But far as these items, do we kinda give these items away to a volunteer fire department? Or what do we do with these items once?
Just put it for auction for surplus when we have our county auctions put in auctions. We cannot, we're not allowed to give anything away.
Do you notify all the volunteer fire departments in the area that's...
We do that. Once, like, I had a call from Flowvilla about a month ago, want some, know if we had any used turnout gear for their department, and we tell them, you know, we get surplus. Our first surplus of, like, turnout gear goes to our explorers, the kids. We have our kids programs that we put them in because it's non-certifiable gear. Once it's used there, or the bottles that have a 15-year lifespan, they're turned over to auction, county surplus.
Okay. Just for a comment, you indicated that you give a lot of, or some surplus stuff to the city of Flowvilla?
No, sir. They asked if we would get, we're having to give away, and we do not give any of our equipment away.
Okay, but they, Flowvilla does get some surplus? Is that what you're saying? Did I miss that?
No, they just called, well, if we had any that we would give, and we did not have any.
Okay. Reason I ask that, back when I was a volunteer fireman in Hampton back in the 80s, every surplus thing we had, we gave to the city of Flowvilla.
Really?
Even trucks. So I thought that was a good thing that you, it may be not suitable for us, but it'd be suitable for somebody else to get used to.
Sure, and we have done it in the past. One of our squad trucks went to Jim Wellman's department in, down in South Georgia where he resides now, but some gratuity issues come up with some law guidelines that does not allow us to do that anymore.
Good deal. Any further questions, comment? Yes, sir.
Just clarification. We, our police department gives bulletproof vests that are out of their warranty for whatever terminology. They're able to give those away for someone to maybe to refurbish them or do something with another department without the auction. What is the difference between that and our fire department helping a volunteer fire department in a similar geographic region as ours?
Chief Johnson. That's correct. The gratuities clause will not allow the county to give anything away. If taxpayer dollars are used to acquire property, then the county can't in turn give it away to someone, and the court has said, no matter how worthy the cause. We could, however, Commissioner Bowman, just a service agreement whereby we get something in exchange for the property, and then we will have to figure out what that consideration would be, what type of service, or what kind of other offering the other city can give to the county in exchange for that. But the same rule will apply to the police department.
Thank you. Maybe we can look at something that we could do, especially within our geographic area to help those that are volunteer stations, because I remember when I moved to Henry County, we were a volunteer fire department.
We got a bunch of surplus from Hall County to Cab County and everything when we first, many years ago. We sure did, just to get by our day-to-day operations.
Thank you.
Any further comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you.
And the last one is D for Public Safety Under Fire, is the request and authorization to purchase SCBA bottles. These are our bottles that the firefighters wear on their back, the air, compressed air. They do have a 15-year lifespan. This is our normal rotation, rotating out of stock as they come to unserviceable condition. This is just our yearly purchase of 15 bottles. That award of $13,438.20 to Georgia Fire Rescue, they are a sole source for this type bottle, for the type of air packs we do have here in Henry County, our recommendations approve that for Georgia Fire Rescue.
Somebody move to adopt or approve the resolution found in your book as published?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District 3, second from District 1. Any question, comments at this time? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, motion, raise your right hand. So moved.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have a resolution request approval of surplus and auction a vehicle for the Henry County Police Department. Major Keith going.
Go in again. About 2007, we received a box-style SWAT van, and we received that from GMA through the state law enforcement program. We utilized that vehicle for several years, and then we obtained a new one. And once we obtained the new van, this one became a secondary van. It doesn't get utilized very often. Because of that, the maintenance has gotten higher than the use, and we're not using it as much as it costs to keep it running. We've checked with GMA. They have now released all liability and all accountability for the vehicle back to us, and we'd ask that it be declared as surplus and be sold in the auction.
We have a resolution in the book that requests the Henry County Board of Commissioners declaring a 1991 Chevrolet van, G3, held by the Henry County Police Department as surplus and auction said vehicle online with govdeals.com. Does somebody move to accept this resolution, approve this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by District 2, second by District 4. Any further discussion, questions, or comment?
There again, Keith, do we...
Did I miss something?
Five and two. Just give it to you.
Well, we actually notify all the police departments that we have this piece of equipment and say if they would be interested in it.
The way that the advertisement for the auction occurs, a lot of other police agencies are aware, when we have a public safety and also in combination with the fire department, an auction where those equipments are gonna come available. Now, in reference to the previous question about the bulletproof vest, I think we had to go through the same thing with the Madam County Attorney the last time. What we did is we turned our vest in to be recycled, and we gave it to, this location paid for it to be transported. There was no money out of our pocket. They will recycle it and then use that to create a new vest. We couldn't just give them an expired vest because they wouldn't be able to utilize it.
Let me ask the attorney a question. Tanya, if we've got equipment like this surplus equipment that we can't use anymore, if another county in Georgia or something that wants this equipment, can we actually give it to them for like maybe a dollar or something?
We are not allowed as a governmental entity to give away property. We just can't do it. It's the gratuities clause in the Georgia Constitution. A dollar would not be, I believe, adequate consideration. Now, we put it out for bid, and if the highest bid is a dollar, it comes off, you know, I'll have to defer to Mr. Gray, the purchasing director. You would need to, the goal is to get the most money you can for taxpayer-acquired property. And, so no, we couldn't just give it away.
Anybody have any questions? Before we vote on this, the chair erred in peripheral hearing, and I acknowledge that the distinguished gentleman from District 2 made the motion for this resolution. In fact, it was District 5. So if the record will reflect that, the distinguished gentleman from District 5 did make the motion, and all remaining parts of the motion still stands. And that's my error. So having said that, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Senior Services Resolution Requesting Approval of a 2014 contract with the Department of Human Services, Diane Reed. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm here requesting approval of our 2014 contract with DHS, Department of Human Services, for CSBG funding for our in-home services program.
We have a resolution in the book authorizing the chairman to execute 2013-2014 Community Services Block Grant Contract, fiscal year 2013-2014, and it's in the amount of $102,531 in federal funds. There's no match required. So if somebody is moving in that direction, we have a motion from District 5, second from District 2. Any further discussion or comments?
Diane, I noticed that we got a reduction in $11,392. Can you explain why we got less money?
It's federal funding. That seems to be a trend this year due to the term they use, the sequestration. Same thing I was here for a few months ago. We also received a reduction in another type of federal funding. We have some hope that in the future it might return to us, but at present, we don't know that, so we are making a reduction in our budget to reflect this cut.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna consider a resolution request authorization of a public sale of unserviceable real property located at 240 Meadowbrook Drive, McDonough.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This first item is an authorization for the public sale of unserviceable real property located at 240 Meadowbrook Drive in McDonough, Georgia. You have attached a parcel of the land that was, that was acquired in November of 1966 in Meadowbrook subdivision. The property is an undeveloped tract of land that is unserviceable and not conducive to public use. It is recommended that the property be sold by way of public auction or sealed bid.
Everybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Will we put a minimum bid amount in that, in that auction proposal?
We can reject any and all bids if we don't feel that we receive fair value. As far as setting a minimum, we could. It's not typically what we would do, but if we, if we had a number in mind and we didn't reach that, then we certainly are not obligated to sell it as a result of the bid. We always reserve the right to reject any and all bids on any of our projects.
If I'm correct, once you receive the bids, this board will have to come back and accept that bid.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
So that would be the checking balance. Is that the question?
Yeah, that's exactly what I want.
Okay. Just for the public's benefit, this board began in the first of the year. We have identified a tremendous amount of land. We have identified all the land by record Henry County BOC owns. We found some of the land, some larger tracts, obviously is, by record, it belongs to the Henry County Water and Sew Authority, but it's labeled the Henry County Board of Commissioners, which in fact, if you look at the rules and regulations, every part that, every parcel they own is sealed, the BOC accepts that as ownership. But we have a, for example, we got 57 Echos we found off of Fairview Road up at the Cab County Line, 57 Echos behind a subdivision that's got 200, 300 homes in it, and there's really no rhyme or reason as to why we have it. So we are going through this list, and this is just the beginning. We got two parcels that we're gonna go this, and once we determine that we have no need, then what we'd like to do, if we have no need for, we need to put it back in tax digest. So I just wanted to say that, but having said that, if somebody approved, we approved the resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing the public sale of unserviceable real property, which is 240 Meadowbrook Drive, McDonough, Georgia.
So moved.
You have a motion from District 4?
Second.
Second from District 3. To approve this motion as published? Any further discussion or comments? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, the second parcel.
Yes, sir. This is an authorization for the public sale of unserviceable real property located on Turner Road. Also, the parcel is attached. The location was acquired in June of 1998, as stated, on Turner Road. The property is an undeveloped tract of land. It's unserviceable and not conducive to public use. There is a covenant in the deed which states no permanent structures are to be erected on the above described property. It is recommended that the property be sold by way of public auction or sealed bid.
Anybody have any questions at this time? If not, will somebody move? I'm sorry. We have a question.
I was gonna move to approve.
Okay, we, we have a motion from District 3 to approve the resolution authorizing the public sale of unserviceable real property, Turner Road. Do we have a second? We have a second from District 1. Any discussion, comments? If not, indicate your vote by raising your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Public hearing and adopting the proposed amendments to the CB correction, CDBG Program 2012. Shannon, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners of the board. Today, this is the second of two public hearings for the proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2012 and fiscal year 2013 annual action plans. The proposed amendments will create activities in both annual action plans to permit the CDBG program to assist the Public Works Division in the repaving of the front parking lot area at a friend's house. A friend's house is a public facility which is eligible for CDBG expenses, or, excuse me, for CDBG assistance. In order to disperse CDBG funds, as under federal statute, the CDBG program does require that a written agreement be executed. That is whether it is to be carried out by a contractor, a sub-recipient, or a division within the participating jurisdiction. The CDBG program has provided a inter-agency agreement which outlines the activities to be carried out by the Public Works Division in an effort to remain in compliance with this requirement. This is a public hearing.
Do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to approach the podium to speak for or against or make comments for this block grant amendment? If so, if you would, please rise and come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. The chair indicates that no one has allowed, has wanted to do this, so having said that, we have a resolution in the book for the board's consideration of Henry County approving amendments to the FYI 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program and approval of inter-agency-agency agreements between the CDBG program and the Henry County Public Works Division. If somebody moved that we adopt this resolution. You have a motion from District 1, second from District 3. Any further discussion? If not, indicate your vote by lifting of your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution request approval of an amended list of roads for use of speed detection device. Mr. MacMickle, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. We had received a call from a representative from the school system and informed us that the hours of operation on the school zone sign on Highway 20 have been changed. Our traffic sign and signal manager contacted the school system and to see if any other of the schools' hours had changed as well, and they had. We received these changes and sent them to GDOT. The District 3 traffic engineer then revised the roadway list for radar to include these changed current school zone times, and then sent them back to us, the county, for adoption, which is before you today to sign. After signature, this list will be sent to Georgia Department of Public Safety, who will issue the permit that will allow law enforcement to use detection devices on this revised list of roadways. In addition, we requested that River Road be added to this list, requesting a reduction in speed from 45 down to 35, and Georgia DOT was in agreement with that change on that road. So we're asking for the chairman to be able to sign this document so we can send it back to Public Safety.
We have a resolution in the book for the board's consideration, Henry County Board of Commissioners, a question approval of an amended list of roadways for use of speed detection devices. We have a question.
I just wanted to thank Terry for, you know, I know, and Shay had also brought it up, which I, tremendous applause for the elephant-type memory to bring things up, but we had had some homeowners who had asked for some monitoring of the streets, and I appreciate you guys keeping that stuff front and centered so that when we had another opportunity to adjust, y'all were on top of it, and I know the citizens appreciate that, too.
And just, you know, for record...
And just, you know, for record, we, you know, again, will be compiling changes once again in recommendations, and Georgia DOT would prefer every year, year and a half, revise these lists, so as things change and progress, you know, we'll look at these and revise as necessary.
Anybody want to move to approve the resolution as published? We have a motion from District Three. Have a second from District Five. Any further discussion, question? If not, so indicate by the raise of your right hand. I'm showing it four to zero, which one of the commissioners excuse himself.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion regarding a request for the McIntosh Trail to utilize the old transit building. Pam McCollum, McIntosh Trail, and you're going.
I'm just going to intro. Yes, sir.
It's okay.
Good morning again, Chairman and Board Members. A few months back, Ms. McCollum, who's the Executive Director of McIntosh Trail, contacted me asking about utilization of our old transit building that's currently been vacated, located on Work Camp Road. We've talked back and forth about it. They have a program that they'd like to utilize that building for, to be able to operate that program out of that building. I've asked Pam if she can come here today and kind of give the board an overview of what McIntosh Trail does, the services that they offer here within Henry County, and why the need for the building exists. With that, I'd like to ask Ms. McCollum to come on up. And again, Ms. McCollum is the Executive Director of McIntosh Trail.
Chairman, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today to make our request to utilize the transit building located on Work Camp Road. Wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of our agency to kind of familiarize you with the services that we provide in Henry County. We are a behavioral health provider. We are a public entity and instrumentality of the state, and we have been a provider within Henry County for many years, and Henry County has been a great supporter of our agency by allowing us to utilize the Henry County Counseling Center and the Henry County Developmental Disability Center here in Henry County. I just wanted to make you aware of the... How we are funded, some of the number of staff that we have, and as you can see, we have fifty-six staff that actually live here in Henry County and work for the agency, and while we have forty-eight individuals that actually work in the county and contribute to the economy of the county. We served over a total of fifteen hundred individuals last year for Henry County. Our agency served about six thousand individuals, and we serve a seven-county area. We make a tremendous impact in the county. We work with the accountability courts within the county. We work with the county jail, the sheriff's department, local D-facts, and other social service agencies within the county. The people that we serve, we're able to help them maintain recovery and become contributing members of the community. We come before you today to make a request to utilize the old transit building located on Work County... Work Camp Road. This is for a peer support program. A peer support program is for individuals with serious mental illness and addictive disease, and allows them an opportunity to come and learn skills that they need to cope with their mental illness, to learn how to maybe to develop a resume, to get into recovery so that they may get jobs, volunteers, continue their education, and become contributing members of our community. This program is currently operated out of the... Behind the Henry County Counseling Center and a part of the building that we have operated out of, we used to have a child and adolescent program. Now, the peer program operates there. By moving, it would allow us to increase our capacity. We currently share that space with the accountability court, and so it has hampered our ability to operate five days a week. So we would be able to increase capacity from three to five days a week. We would also be able to have two sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session, which would allow us to increase the number of individuals that we would serve, going from thirty-five to fifty, or more, depending on the need of the individuals that we serve. We would like to continue to utilize the space that we have in the back of the counseling center, which would allow us to have some office space for individuals that do not see people in their offices. They would move them out of the counseling center, thereby increasing our capacity to serve individuals in the counseling center. We have been able to increase our funding through by providing an ACT program, which stands for Assertive Community Treatment. We also have a contract with the VA to provide services for the veterans. We've added two additional clinical staff in the Henry County office to serve veterans. So through your... If you approve this request, it would allow us to increase our capacity and to better serve the residents of Henry County. I've also provided you with some contact information for our clinical director who's here with me today, as well as for the folks that actually work here in Henry County and support the services that we provide.
I was just going to make the statement that, you know, what we're asking today is, again, it came through the board as a discussion item only, so we're not asking for any action by the board. Only some directions.
That's what I was going to ask. Having said that, we have a question or comment from District Four.
Yes, ma'am. And I noticed that you have two hundred full-time staff. Fifty-six of these live in Henry County, according to your handout. It's approximately twenty-five percent. Would those that live in Henry County, would they be employed at this particular location? Or would they still be driving the Griffin?
It depends. We serve seven counties, and so I just wanted to make you aware that the numbers don't... They're not duplicated, so there may be... Fifty-six may live here but work in various parts of our county area. So I wouldn't say that any of them would be able to... We wouldn't be increasing staff, but maybe by one individual. So I'm not sure that that would make any change in the number of people that live here and work here.
It does kind of help, as far as I'm concerned, to make a decision on it based on the fact that it would create... Not create, but allow our citizens that live in the county not to have to drive quite as far in, that we're using, you know, taxpayer property in order to make this happen. And I appreciate what McIntosh Trail does, I really do. At the... I was just looking at the numbers, and two hundred, you had a hundred and twenty-five hourly staff through a staffing agency, so you don't really know where they live, or are they Henry County citizens as well? Do you have a number on those?
That number is included in the number. While we do use the staffing company because of the hourly rate, we do consider the McIntosh Trail employees that work for the agency. So this is a combined number. I did get it broken down. It's sent to me, but I don't have the number of full-time versus hourly.
Yes, ma'am. So make sure I understand, the two hundred full-time, a hundred and twenty-five of those two hundred are provided by staffing agency?
No, it's in addition to.
In addition to, so basically, three hundred and twenty-five employees.
Right.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Individuals that are treated, are they sentenced to the program or are they recommended?
Most of our programs are voluntary programs. We do work with the accountability courts, so for some of those individuals, they are mandated to treatment. However, the majority of those that we serve are voluntary, so they may come to us by word of mouth or recommendations to seek treatment, but the programs are voluntary.
Are the majority of those individuals from inside the county or outside the county?
All of the individuals that we serve in this program would be inside the county, so it would allow us to increase the number of residents from Henry County that we're able to serve in the peer support program.
Anybody else have any comment?
One more question. We're talking about leasing the building or...
That's correct. And... We've had conversations with Ms. McCollum. They'd be... They've offered to cover all utility costs. And again, we... So we would work together and negotiate a lease agreement, working with the legal department to come up with a acceptable lease agreement and bring that back for the board for consideration.
It's similar to the arrangement that we have with the Henry County Counseling Center, which is operated out of the Health Department across the street, as well as the Henry County Developmental Disability, which is located on...
Industrial Boulevard.
Industrial Boulevard.
Anybody else have any questions or comment? If not, thank you so much, and we will take this under advisement.
Okay. And if that be the case, then the staff will move forward with crafting a lease agreement to bring back for the board for their consideration, working in conjunction with the legal department and with Ms. McCollum.
I think that would be the tentative consensus.
Okay.
We would like to move forward and look. We'd have to work out the details.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, a question for approval of ordinance regarding the film, television, and video permits.
Thank you again, Chairman, Board. In recent months, Henry County has received several requests from filming agencies, and we've actually had some opportunities that have come our way regarding movies and television shows that have requested to film and have actually done some filming here within the Henry County boundaries. In an effort to address and accommodate these requests in a timely and a consistent manner, felt it was important to come up with a... An ordinance that actually specifically addressed these type of requests. So that's what you have before you. Actually, this was, the majority of which was crafted by our previous communications director, looking at some other jurisdictions. Looked at some other jurisdictions that currently do have ordinances in place that speak specifically to filming, whether it be a TV show or for movies within their jurisdiction. We took a lot of that information and have come up with a crafted ordinance that we think speaks to and addresses a lot of the particulars associated with the filming industry. Point was made earlier regarding whether or not we're being a little bit more restrictive in this case, and I did. I went back to Commissioner Preston's point. I reviewed Sonoy, which is one of the more common jurisdictions that we know of that does a lot of filming. Their ordinance at the state's right now, they actually require their mayor and council to approve every application that comes in, and this actually takes that function and associates it with the... Our communications department. So it certainly gives them far more leeway and far more flexibility and the ability to kind of come up and obtain a permit in a more timely basis, and that's one of our key concerns. We didn't want to have to wait until a board meeting before determination was made. We want to have this as a staff function, and if there are concerns, it'd be appealed back to the county manager's office. So it does allow some more additional... Some greater flexibility from that standpoint. And while it is... There are a number of sections, you know, and reviewing some of the ones that were used as models, Sonoy, Roswell, Marietta. Ours does... It captures elements of different aspects that other ones didn't really necessarily capture. As a good example, pyrotechnics, you know, situations like that, was there going to be explosions involved, where other jurisdictions may not have captured that particular element. We made a point to make sure we did. We felt it was in our best interest to make sure we captured it up front and make sure they were clear on what the requirements would be, what permit would be required. It should also be noted that all requests, the way this is drafted right now, all requests would come through our communications department. I've spoken with our communications director, Ms. Melissa Robinson, and she would serve as a film liaison. So she would serve as the contact person for the film agency so they wouldn't have to worry about running from department to department to try and coordinate their various permits or needs that would be required from PD to fire, planning zoning for signs, and with our DOT as well for parking and for road closures. One of the longest sections you see in here is related to the road closure section. There is a provision, again, Commissioner Preston, to speak to your point, you bring up a good point, is it punitive? There's a line that requires a... I think it's a fifty... Fifty dollars per minute, per lane. That's only in this instance if they have not gone through and acquired a permit. So we're really... It's a disincentive, if you will, to ensure that they do come in and meet with staff to make sure we're aware of the project, aware of what's going on, to ensure they do come in and get a permit. If they have a permit, then that wouldn't apply, because again, the permit process would dictate when the lane closures would take place, make sure that all the appropriate agencies are notified, those being emergency agencies, and in some cases, the school board would have to be notified if we have school roster to be affected. So that really just serves as a disincentive to not move forward without obtaining a permit. And there was... There's one amendment I would like to propose in this, on the first section, Section Three that's seventeen, that's sixty-nine, the second from the last paragraph begins, "Once the filming shot is completed, the affected departments will make an assessment of damages and refund any unused damage, deposit, or per diem held over to the applicant, allow forty-five days for processing." That was a carryover. That should have been deleted from this section. I apologize, but I would propose that the consideration for this ordinance be done with that one amendment, deleting that one paragraph.
Mr. Chairman, Can I just give some thoughts? I guess the reason, Mike, I brought this to you is that, you know, we all have regrets sometimes of things that we've done in the past, and I was on the school board in the past when we had an opportunity that came to film Footloose. Y'all remember the movie Footloose where they remade it? This is probably four or five years ago at this point. They wanted to use Henry County High School's stadium. There was a conflict. We didn't... I wanted it to come through, but it just... The board's feeling was it wasn't the case, and I still kind of regret that we never had that happen, because, you know, what I think film does is film creates something that... It can be a tourist attraction, and also, I mean, how often do you... Maybe it doesn't happen as much, but growing up here, one of the coolest things was the Smokey and the Bandit stories of how often, you know, hey, Smokey and the Bandit came right there, you know, the house right there where the police used to sit, they came right through there. I mean, it was all nostalgic, and it really added a lot of color and character to the area. And I just want to make sure, because I look at Sonoya, I look at Covington, they have reoccurring TV shows. Now, Marietta, which I know you listed, they've had movies and some projects up there, but I would love for us... I know we had Resurrection filming here. Hopefully, it will have a long life on ABC. I want us to get a reoccurring show, and I don't see the film credits going away. That's why we're getting so much filming, is the state of Georgia is incentivizing, you know, Hollywood and all these filming production companies to come to Georgia to get these state tax credits, that I just want to make sure we're doing everything in our power to make sure they know, open arms, we want you here because we think you're a good thing. I mean, you go to Covington, they've had a complete resurgence in their downtown scene where you have Zac Brown and others opening up restaurants. You have tourists coming in to buy stuff from it. I just want to make sure we have every opportunity. I don't... I hate it when we delay stuff and table stuff, but I was going to put it out there to the board after we get through comments to consider tabling it until the seventeenth, just... And then I'd give the staff time to give all of us the resolution for Covington as well as Sonoya, so that we can see really communities that are nailing it on getting reoccurring TV shows and just... Because we have no... I have no bar to know where we should be right now. I know you guys and staff looked at it, but I'd like to kind of just give it a glance to look at it as well, but... And I hate it when we table stuff, but I just want to throw that out there and make to see if any other commissioners had an issue with just putting it off for two weeks to give a glance at those two communities.
Yeah, and that's fine from our standpoint. You know, I think what's important, I think what people within the industry look for is, when they're considering jurisdictions, if they have anything in place, I think far often, more often than not, there's nothing in place. I think that's what their concern has been. And then some years back, we... Before with Flip's Films, Scream Industry, Flip's Films, and I think the impetus behind that list, so we had a process in place. I think those that are looking at a jurisdiction want to know that they have a process, so they can at least look at that process and say, I know it's going to take me X amount of time. I know it's going to cost me X amount. So if they have that upfront, what we've heard is that that's certainly one advantage for any jurisdiction that's considering, that's being considered.
I don't have a problem with it being tabled for two weeks. And the thing we could do, once it's tabled, when it comes back on the seventeenth, we can take these pen and ink changes that you just mentioned publicly...
Right.
And make that a hard copy, and it would be face value.
That's fine.
That would be a feature, so.
And I can get the information from both Sonoy and Covington and forward that to the commissioners as well for your consideration during that time. the commissioners as well for your consideration during that time.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'd just like to say, Michael, I commend you for putting this together. I think it's a good ordinance. I don't have any problem putting it off. I think anytime you can put something off and make sure you get it right, it's the right decision. But I just like, I read it, and I think it's a good start. And that building that you were talking about on the square, where he pulled behind the old police shack, well, we tore that down right after we, after that movie to do some renovation on the square. But the old police shack, that's the building.
Any more comments? If not, somebody move, we consider tabling it by motion?
I make the motion that we just table this for two weeks until the 17th meeting.
Have a motion, table it to the 17th. Have a second. We had a motion by District Two, second by District Three. Any comments, discussion? If not, indicate by the right hand lifting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a county attorney requesting a declaration of the results of the SPOLOST election held on November the 5th, 2013.
Good morning, Board members. As you know, SPOLOST IV was approved by the citizens of Henry County on November 5th. The results of that election have been certified by the Henry County Board of Elections and Registration, as reflected on Exhibit A. They had their board meeting yesterday, and they certified the results. 13,972 votes were cast. 7,506 were in favor of the reimposition of a SPOLOST penny sales tax, and 6,466 votes were cast against that measure. It is now time for you, as the Board of Commissioners, to formally declare the election results and make a sufficiency determination with respect to the anticipated proceeds. As you are aware, the measures that was approved by the voters authorized the Board of Commissioners the ability to issue up to $100 million in bonds in order to complete those SPOLOST projects. This resolution is the first step in allowing you all to take that step when it becomes time to do so. So I would ask that you approve the resolution as provided, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions at this point? If not, we have a resolution for your consideration for the Board of Commissioners of Henry County with respect to the declaration of the results of the SPOLOST election held on November the 5th, 2013, and for other related purposes. Does somebody move that we approve this said resolution?
Some move.
Have a motion by District Five, second by District Two. Any further discussion? I want to favor lift your right hand. Some move. Thank you.
Again. Out of the difference of the total vote, I think it was 1,040 votes, it took to win the SPOLOST IV. Seventy-three percent of those votes came out of District Five, so I want to thank the residents of my district for coming out and supporting the vote. Out of the vote, a number of economic development projects will benefit our community. Bellamy Brothers Memorial Park will help increase commerce in the area, and also Sewer will help attract new businesses to the area. So thanks again, District Five, and we look forward to serving you in the future.
Anybody else have a comment? Let's move, District One nominations to the hospital authority. District One.
I do. I've got three today.
Okay.
First one would be Mr. Jeff Mills. Second would be Mr. Mike Lyles. And the third would be Ms. June O'Neill.
Does anybody approve a motion that we submit these three names to the Henry County Hospital Authority for consideration to fill a seat that's going to be expired? Have a motion District Four, second from District Three. Any further discussion? I want to favor raise your right hand. Thank you. Do we have anybody sign up for public comments? Chairman and Commissioners, comments? The chairman has no comments at this time. Do we have any commissioner that'd like to make a comment at this time for any reason? Okay.
I would just like to thank the fire department. We just got through with that fire academy, and Brad and all the staff done a great job. And we had, I think, what, 28 people, Brad, turned out and was a great job. And I thank all the fire department for all their efforts in making it such a good program. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comment? District Two.
I want to, today's kind of a blessing and also, I'm at my midlife point today. I officially turned 40 today. So I apologize for being a little distracted. I've had, you know, a lot of my friends know that I'm up here hanging out with you guys today, so they're texting me pictures of my kindergarten yearbook picture and all kind of other stuff, I think, just to, no. Because I was wearing my Morris the Cat shirt that I think we got from sending in box tops, so it was a little embarrassing, to say the least. But I just want to thank you guys for letting me come hang out with you today. But it's a little different turning 40, and a little different feeling than the other birthdays.
Any other comments?
I'd like to take time just to remind everybody, this Saturday night at 6:00, McDonald will have their annual Christmas parade, so y'all come out.
Okay, let's move down. County manager, you have any comments? County attorney, you have any comments?
No, sir.
They're coming meeting Tuesday, December 17th at 6:30 PM, a regular board meeting. All county offices will be closed on the following dates for the holidays, December 24th and December 25th, December 31st and January the 1st, 2014. We need to go into executive session for two issues, I understand. One is pending potential litigation. Second one is a personnel issue. So if somebody would move to adjourn the executive session in accordance with the provision of Georgia law.
Some move.
Have a motion from District Three to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Have a second from District Two. Any further discussion? I want to favor raise your right hand. Have a motion from District Two.
Second.
Second from District One. Any further discussion? I want to favor raise your right hand. Does somebody move that we approve of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session?
Some move.
Have a motion from District Five. Correction, District Four. Second from District Three. Any further discussion? I want to favor say, correction, raise your right hand. Does somebody move we adjourn?
I'll move.
We have a motion from District Three, second from District Four, to adjourn. Any further discussion? If not, show your approval by the uplift of your right hand. Okay.